It would be appropriate at this point to call Lydell Nolt, our Chief of Police, to come up please. And I would also request that Judge Gill will join us as well.
Aye.
Aye. Lydell, you go.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That is Chief of Police.
That is Chief of Police.
In Kennet Township.
In Kennet Township.
I will support.
I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I can't see you. Thank you. You're the right man for this job.
This is peat work. The first effort of peat work. You have special treatment there. You get your own cake. All you have to do is just scare out the face on that. Just some very, very brief comments. To all my colleagues who are in the back of the room. Your support tremendous. To everyone seated down here. Your support tremendous. One very brief thing about law enforcement and about this agency. For my tenure going forward, this agency is this community and this community is this agency. So this will be my motto going forward.
So we have this cake. It's going to be in the back with Sarah. And you're all invited to help yourself to a piece of cake. And after a moment, as we get settled, then we'll go into the rest of the meeting.
Very well. Thank you.
Very good. She only had the cake. Hurry.
No, this is.
Yeah, yeah. No.
I saw it.
Actually, I think she was like.
For work.
Yeah.
I love it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
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 Right.
Well.
I'm trying to read.
Yeah.
What I would call.
Yeah.
Every day.
Yeah.
Try to get on.
Make the world.
Someone never.
Tell us.
The chief seems like.
I mean.
So.
What is he trying to do?
But.
No, don't do so.
Don't be a fart.
Yeah.
I'm serious.
I was just.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
I'm sure.
Sure.
I know.
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 Yeah.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll get it out there.
We said twenty minutes.
Yeah.
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 Everybody else.
Are you saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't like.
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 Well, you know what? It's a little bit of a woman.
Yeah.
I don't like.
I don't like.
I don't like.
They call.
They go out for that.
Um, particularly.
Yeah.
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 You remember, we're being the first. We've been company through the technology. And then that decade. And it was funny to us.
Yeah.
My son says. That's it. That's it. Yep. So first tech challenge is next. Where they don't use my guys. Or they don't have to do the first research project. And they go.
Yeah.
And they go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You make it after.
Yeah.
It'd be like.
When it's open.
Yeah.
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 Michael.
Michael.
Every year.
Yeah.
Just wanted you to know that.
Yeah.
Not like the mail.
What are you talking about?
Yeah.
Just to be again.
We're going to ask you.
Yeah.
A big kiss.
Yeah.
After someone.
Yeah.
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 You don't.
You don't.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't.
I don't.
I don't.
Yeah.
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 You don't.
You don't.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't.
I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Matt, urge you to get a piece of cake. To do it now because we're going to start in just a minute. So let's pull things back together again.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
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 Matt, do you have jet lag?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Yeah.
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 Do we have a motion to address the minutes from the supervisors meeting June 17th and July 1st? Move we approve?
Second.
And we're doing both at the same time?
Yes.
Correct? We're doing both at the same time?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hold. Wait. Wait. I sent Lisa a. On camera.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do you want to tell us?
Can we comment? You have a question here, sir. Can we comment on the minute?
Sorry?
I said, can we comment on the minute?
Sure.
Just my spelling of my name.
I need names and township or not township.
Pardon?
I need you to identify yourself as to name and whether you're a township resident.
Bob Waters, township resident. Just like to correct the spelling of my name in a minute.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
Linda Carter, township resident. I was looking at the packet that you received and I was just trying to clarify what is part of the minutes for, I guess now is June 17th, which does refer to the water letter. And I was curious, what is the process? If that is included in the minutes, what is your process to address comments that citizens may have, questions to the supervisors that have come in through the minutes?
I would like to address that. We made an. When there were corrections that you guys requested a while ago, I replied and let y'all know if you wanted them in the minutes verbatim, you must bring it in writing and ask for it to be submitted. Mr. Waters did that at the June meeting, so that's why they are attached. He brought it in writing and handed it to me.
Yeah. And I was just curious, does anything happen to that or is it just public record?
That's public record in the minutes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
As am I, so it passes. Okay. Announcements regarding executive session?
The Board of Supervisors had an executive session today at 4:30 to discuss the acquisition of real estate.
Anything on manager's report?
Yes. I wanted to announce that the supervisors did adopt the comprehensive plan on July 1st. They did agree to allow the committees more time to give input to the comprehensive plan. And if there are changes to the comprehensive plan, then it will be re-adopted on September 16th at the supervisors' public meeting. The, I was going to talk about paving, but our public works director's here. He will discuss that in a few minutes. The other thing is, I just wanted to let everybody know, we are working on an ordinance that will contain about 20 different changes to various ordinances. So once that's in a draft form, we'll put that on the website for review and it will go to the planning commission for their official review. So.
And shall we call our newly minted chief or do you want to give the police report?
He has his cleats for it. I don't see him.
Yeah. He's outside. He got the cake.
You check. He got his cake. He got his sugar.
Yeah. He's outside.
He's outside. Somebody's got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you find? Thank you.
That's what's done.
Thank you.
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 So hopefully this isn't the start of my tenure being completely unprepared for my police report. But. June 2015 police report. The Kennet Township Police in conjunction with the state police provided police service to 280, but emergency police incident in the municipality of Kennet during the month of June. The police department recommends that residents review their residential alarm connections with the monitoring system. So what basically I mean with that is, we're finding that people that have alarms hooked up will ultimately end up either getting the alarm companies to send it to the state police, getting alarm companies to send it to Delaware sometimes or media sometimes just simply because how the alarm company activates your alarm. So the recommendation is that you contact your alarm company and direct an alarm activation to Chester County's 911 Emergency Services number. If you have questions about that or I could just come into the station, I would be glad to help you with that. Residents with special needs such as occupants with disabilities or other special needs are encouraged also to come into the police department so we can help you to update the Chester County Emergency Services CAD information. What that does, that will allow first responders to have updated permanent information on the occupants of your residence. For example, if you have a somewhat disability who's complying to the first floor, that information will come up in the event of emergency where there's a dispatcher in, whether it's EMS or fire or police. So we can help you with that CAD information update as well. So come in the police department, turn your information in and we'll help you with that. The police department in the month of June also provided options to assist the Chester County Highway Safety Program. This program is used for enforcement to promote motor safety by detecting and arresting impaired drivers on the roadways throughout the Commonwealth. I want to talk about two laws that are kind of essentially forgotten or maybe not adhered to the way they should be. There's a law essentially called the steer clear for emergency vehicle law, which requires drivers to move over or stop and yield to emergency vehicles. So if you're traveling on a highway where there's two lanes, you have the duty to move to the opposite lane to steer clear on the emergency vehicle as you pass that. If you cannot do that, you're simply required to stop immediately to the side of the street and allow the emergency vehicles to conduct their business, whether it be fire trucks, EMS or the police car. There's fines for up to $250 for failing to comply with that law. The second thing, and this is kind of unique to Kennet Township, for someone, everyone likes to bicycle in Kennet Township, but I think it's probably because, you know, the scenery is nice and everyone enjoys to ride the bikes in the township. A bicycle in Pennsylvania is considered a vehicle, so therefore they are required to obey the same traffic laws as a car. Stop signs, signaling returns. But they also afforded the right for motorists to pass them and provide clearance from at least four feet. So if you're a motorist and you're going to pass a bicycle, you need to provide at least four feet of clearance as you pass the bicycle so you can do so safely. One final warning for residents. We seem to continually on a daily, if not multiple times during the day, we get scams from residents, whether they be phone scams, computer scams, stuff coming through the mail scams. So my advisement is simply confirm the business with whom ever you're conducting business with prior to giving out any information. If somebody follows you on the phone and you're not sure what legitimate business you have with them, take a few minutes, vet the business before you provide any information. That helps you prevent a scam. If you feel that it's not, you know, it's not a legitimate business, feel free to contact the police department. We can evaluate the situation, determine whether it is a scam and ultimately prevent you from getting, you know, some financial impact on you because you were a victim of a scam. So that's my very quick and distracted.
If I have one thing, would you let them know about the police blogger?
Yes. As part of some of our information trends and as my tenure starts up is, is to provide a police blogger or police information report on a bi-weekly or incident-based timeframe. So the police blogger will go out to the local news media. Mr. Waters already sitting here. I think he got one from me just a few days ago. It'll go out to local news media. They can choose to print or not print, whatever they choose. They'll go on our website as well. So if anyone wants to check it out, they can go directly to the website.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much, Chief. John Hadrick, would you like to deal with the old business, one of our valley landscaping plan?
What do we do for market?
You can either use that one or you can take mine.
Sam Norwood. Great.
John, can you take and push the easel back against the wall? I don't think we're going to need that tonight. Thank you.
Tom Dale and I are working on the Greenway Project, which is landscaping of the Kennet Pike from Route 1 to the, to South of Menin Hall. Part of that effort was to look at all the parcels, including the new restaurant at Menin Hall Inn. As we looked at that, it became clear to us that the landscape plan that we approved approximately nine years ago was not compatible with what we were trying to achieve. We brought it to the attention of the Hionas people and they also agreed. So we developed a plan, which is on the display there, for an updated landscaping plan. We brought that before the board about a month ago. And some of the Deerfield residents, which is just to the sound of this parcel, felt that the new plan did not give them the buffering that the original plan did. So we agreed, as the suggestion of the board, that we would meet with the residents and try to work out some of the differences or some of the concerns. We've done that. We had one meeting here with the residents. There was a follow-up meeting with the township landscape architect on site with one or more of the residents. There was a site visit subsequent to that. And there's been a lot of discussion, emails going back and forth. I want to bring you up to date to where we stand tonight. One of the suggestions, now let me, I want to go back a little earlier. The reason this plan was.
Tom Nail and I are working on the Greenway project, which is landscaping of the Kennet Pike from Route 1 to the South of Mendon Hall. Part of that effort was to look at all the parcels, including the new restaurant at Mendon Hall Inn. As we looked at that, it became clear to us that the landscape plan that we approved approximately nine years ago was not compatible with what we were trying to achieve. And we brought it to the attention of the Hiounas people, and they also agreed. So we developed a plan, which is on the display there, for an updated landscaping plan. We brought that before the board about a month ago. And some of the Deerfield residents, which is just to the sound of this parcel, felt that the new plan did not give them the buffering that the original plan did. So we agreed, as the suggestion of the board, that we would meet with the residents and try to work out some of the differences or some of the concerns. We've done that. We had one meeting here with the residents. There was a follow-up meeting with the township landscape architect onsite with one or more of the residents. There was a site visit subsequent to that, and there's been a lot of discussion, emails going back and forth. I want to bring you up to date to where we're staying tonight. One of the suggestions, now let me, I want to go back a little earlier. The reason this plan was modified from nine years ago, particularly as it affects the buffering of Deerfield, is that the woods, I'll call it woods area, there's a lot of growth. Tom Nail, could you point to where that is? You can start over there. On those three boundaries, the woods had gotten a lot thicker, and it seemed to be impractical to put new landscaping in there. So when we met here with the residents, we came up with the idea, because there is significant space between the property line and where the homes are up on the hill, a lot of open lawn area in particular. We came up with the idea, perhaps we could have Hiounas contribute to plantings within the Deerfield property as a solution, because in time, particularly as plants mature, it would give them an outstanding buffer. So with that in mind, we did meet with the residents onsite, and it became clear at that time, the residents wanted a little more independence in their approach to solving this problem than what we came up with with the township landscape architect. Well, to solve that problem, instead of having Hiounas plan on their property, we said, "How about a dollar contribution from Hiounas?" Well, that was a sticking point, and we decided what was an appropriate dollar amount. I think where we are tonight, I can say this, that the original plan as presented last month to the board is what we are still staying with, with the added condition that the Hiounas group will contribute $5,000 to the Deerfield Homeowners Association for them to plant buffering plant materials. And they're going to do it for their own design, for their own contractors. It's all in their hands. So that is the current plan. Tom Nail and I talked to George Shaker this afternoon. He is the president of the Deerfield Homeowners Association. And George told us verbally that they agreed to the latest offers, characterize it that way, from Hiounas, as he raised his contribution amount to $5,000. So there seems to be agreement, at least based on the verbal assurance of George Shaker. And then we have some residents here tonight from Deerfield, and we'll see what their views are momentarily. But the plan is that we would go with this revised landscape plan, which we feel is compatible with what we're trying to achieve on the Greenway landscaping along Kennet Pike. I think the Hiounas people feel that it's more compatible with what they want to achieve as far as having a quality restaurant with the kind of landscaping that you would want for a property here on the Kennet Pike. So we think it's a win-win. So that's basically my statement. We've got Tom committed here tonight if there's questions on the landscape plan itself. But I guess I'd first like to see if Deerfield residents have some input at this point.
John, before you do that, let me just check to make sure that we're all in agreement as to the procedure. This is essentially a multifaceted arrangement amongst the neighbors, the businesses, and the residents in that area, but it also involves the township because it is our design that we've adopted in the past, and we're amending, if I understand it correctly, tonight, proposed to amend it tonight. So if that's correct, we need a motion that pulls all this together into one cohesive position. Am I understanding this correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. So then, before we start going into discussion of the pieces, let's have a motion on the floor, and then we can discuss it based on that motion.
I approve the Hiounas landscape plan dated July 15, 2015.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. So now it is, now it's a motion, now we can discuss it. Do the board members have any discussion?
I mean, if both parties are satisfied, I guess my only question is, do we need to add anything about the, I guess, donation to Deerfield HLA in the motion?
I can address that. We work for the township manager and have an agreement that would be signed by the township manager and the Hiounas project manager. That agreement says by September, or before September 15th, they would make a $5,000 contribution to the township, and the township in turn would forward those funds, full amount of those funds, to the homeowners association. And that's basically a very simple agreement.
And it's for that particular use, or is it unrestricted?
It says specifically for installation of buffering plants.
Okay, thanks.
I have a copy of it, if you'd like to see it.
No, I trust.
So that we're actually doing two things. We're authorizing the township manager to enter into that contract, and we're also adopting this revision to the plan.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion from anybody in the audience?
Bill Shelton, resident, just had a general question. Will there also be a legal release or other kind of document? Is this finality to this issue for the residents, the business owner, and the township? Is there something about the agreement that makes this finally complete?
Yes, that's included in Exhibit I.
Okay, good.
Okay. Yes, from the residents.
Let me do a little end point. I am a resident. Yeah, and I would think that the motion probably should include the proviso that the financial arrangement for the buffering plants is part of the reason to accept this adopted plan. Because, I mean, we wouldn't have wanted you to accept that plan as it exists right now. So the only reason that we're, from our standpoint, is the arrangement to have us in the buffering plan.
So the money component is consideration for this whole package going through.
Exactly, because it's basically changing the obligation that Hiounas had per the approved plan to Deerfield to accomplish essentially the same thing, because we've got the space, and apparently it looks like there isn't space to do the same thing. So I just wanted it to be clear that our agreement, our agreement to the plan is based on the fact that we found another solution, which we appreciate the township working on it with.
Thank you. And it certainly would be, and I haven't read this contract, but from everything that's been stated, it's clear in my mind that that's the intention, and that's what is happening. That there's a payment from Hiounas, and there is a plan that the residents have agreed to, and so this whole thing comes together as you're requesting it come together.
Yeah, I agree. And it is perfectly clear, sitting here in this room, but time does go by, and I would hate for it to become unclear in the future.
Well, there's a written contract that'll be signed by everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. There it is. Contract's on the wall. Mr. Goll.
Yes, for John, what kind of buffering plants are going to be installed? And when will they be installed? And who is in charge?
Well, this is part of the reason that I mentioned at the site visit, it became clear, and it's clear in the exhibit that will go along with this contract, that the easiest way to deal with that was to give a cash contribution to the homeowners association. The homeowners will decide what plans, who plans them, when they get planted, and so forth.
Thank you.
The only restriction, which is stated in here that Hiounas was interested in, is that this money go towards plants, and, you know, not to build a hot tub or something.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, seeing no hands. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As am I. It passes. Thank you. Thank you very much, John.
We have extra copies of drawings.
As you may recall from the beginning before you got your sugar high, roadwork is shifted up to following Mendon Hall, so.
Good evening, everybody. The road report this month, I'll just tell you a little bit about what's going on, and we want to tie in a little bit of what roads are going to be paved and cracked or sealed this summer. Our crack sealing of the roads that are going to be slurry sealed is a new type of sealing we're trying out this year instead of oil and chip. We've gotten away from the oil and chip surface, so this is a new product we're trying. Ahead of time, we come in and do rubberized crack ceilings. We put cracks out, fill them with a rubberized material. That is done on the roads that are going to be slurry, which are Ashford Drive on Route 52, and all of Valmarl Drive, Valmarl Circle, Edinburgh Road, South Street, Leslie Road out by the ball field, and Melkwood Drive, Yerun Burd Road. All of them, except for Leslie Road, has been crack sealed. We're fighting the wet weather and other jobs that are going on, so between the trees and the rain and everything else, we're slowly working on it. I don't have a timeframe of when the sealing will be done. I haven't talked to the contractor yet. We're not ready for him to come in, so it'll probably be in August sometime, I would say. Penn Knot milled out the patches. There's spots on Caylon Road just passed month. Turned out pretty good. I guess there was some issues with the, they left the holes down for a couple of days before the pavers would get in, but we addressed that with Penn Knot. I think they're even worked out with that. All the millings that came off the road were halted. The township, we took ownership of that material. We figured it was in the townships that we'd offer back out in our recycling program, so let's, and it's has been going out to several different places, so. Tree trimming has been done in Ashford Drive, Melkwood Drive, and a little bit in Valmarl. We still have more to do in Valmarl yet. Try to get that done before the sealing gets started. There was an inlet box and 120-foot pipe placed on Donnie Lane, Denver, and Davenport off Cedar Puffer. Yeah, there's a great issues over there we're trying to address. On June 23rd, we had our big major storm come through, which everybody realizes how bad it was, except for me, I was away on vacation. My guys handled it very well. I understand. There was a lot of tension going on through that storm. Everybody doesn't realize why the tower doesn't come back on, and you can't put wires together. We can't even control where they come from or get in contact with them. But we tried to help out where we could. The guys went around, you know, we lost electric along with everybody else, along with traffic lights, pump stations, and the guys, along with cutting trees up, the guys were handling generators checking pump stations, making sure that they didn't go down, and they did a fine job, so thank you guys for that. During the storm, we had some problems up in Haven Village with the drainage backup. We checked it out. A couple of issues were raised during the period of checking it out, which we're addressing. One of the inlets had been plugged up with some weeds and stuff, and that's one reason why it was draining. And that's not the reason why the houses that called getting backup water was from the drain system. It was not from the drain system, our drain system. We're not quite sure what drain system's in that area. We're still back searching old Longwood files and records and tried to find out. I think a lot of them are French drains, and it's just been so much backed up water. I don't know whether it's coming back up through or not, but. We sent a letter out during the storm because there's several drain lines that come into the inlet boxes, which one of the new MS4 standards, you can't do any type of house drains to an inlet box. It's not, we're going to, we're going to address it as we get to it in that point. It kind of came up as a sore spot right away, but we're not going to come in and plug up pipes right away. We're going to, we'll have meetings or talk to people, and talk to the residents and be in contact with them for that. But that's going to be township-wide, once the MS4 program gets underway, and we start doing inspections, and we'll just have to handle every problem as we come across it, so. Line painting was set up to be done this week, but with all the rain weather, we are on back, so it should be next week maybe. All the roads that are painted will be repainted, and there are crosswalks and intersections. The roads that are getting paved this summer, the only one that gets the lines dry, I mean, is the section of Hillendale, and it will be done after the paving is finished. We talked to the paving contractor today, just to jump ahead a little bit. They're backed up prior to the rain. They're going the whole co-op, which there are seven other townships worth of them. So we're talking maybe the second week of September when they're going to be here, unless we get another major rainstorm or something, so. The roads being paved this year are Skyview Development out off of Route 41, East Hillendale Road between McFarland Road and Bayard Road. The subdivision of Longwood Crossings runs between Bayard Road and McFarland, and it's Canterbury Drive, Westover, Cambridge Circle, Regent's Court, and Yorktown Circle. And they get milled, we get some milling base repaired on all these roads before they get paved. And it's pretty much handles, we are working on cross pipes on Hillendale Road. We still have four more to put in, so we have been closing the roads during the daytime, had a detour posted. So a little bit inconvenient, but it makes it a little quicker for us to get them through. And then we'll come back and do some spot paving before the paver comes in. Other than that, I think that's pretty much it. Any questions? I can answer frequently. Yes?
I just want to say, I'm Whitney Hoffman, Kennet County. You did a great job getting the crew out right away. Right after that storm, there's a huge tree that crossed Ashford Drive, and looked like it was going to drop on anybody any minute, and you got people out right away. So a big thank you to the road crew for being so hard.
Thank you. Yes, they did a great job.
I wanted to say something about that, especially the three that are in the back. We have Andrew Earl, Eric Petrucci, and Mark Fattanza. They did an amazing job during the storm. They actually took over part of Pico's job, just to help get the roads opened. We authorized them to stay on, and they stayed very late many nights just to get the trees out of the way, which were Pico's responsibility. But Pico wasn't going to have a crew through for a couple of days to get it done, so they did an amazing job. But Pico wasn't gonna have a crew through for a couple of days to get it done, so they did an amazing job.
Thank you, Roger. This brings us up to the section of the agenda that's new business, and I'll ask for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Lisa, can you give us the background for the resolution to sell unmarked vehicle?
Yes, we have a... It's actually 2005 Ford Crown Victoria unmarked police car that the transmission doesn't work in the car, and there's a couple of other things that are wrong with it. We tried to sell the car on municipal bid and weren't successful. We have a resident who wants to buy the car from us. His name is Albert Mannwaring. He... We're gonna sell him the car for $200, because even though it's worth maybe $400, he donated a lot of fence to the township. We were on a property on, at the corner of Hillendale and Bayard Road. We had to remove all the trees there, plant new trees, and buy new fence to put back up. He donated all the fence to be put back up. So this resolution is to sell him the vehicle for $200.
And he's gonna come and get it?
Yes. Roger will be happy for it to be gone.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, it passes. Lisa, do you want to tell us about the sign ordinance?
Yes. The township is amending the current sign ordinance. And some of the highlights with the ordinance are to change the definitions for billboard signs, off-premise signs, changeable copy of signs. The township zoning officer and our landscape architect, Tom Comit, who's sitting in the front row, and myself, and our solicitor worked on a draft ordinance. That draft ordinance went to the planning commission on June 8th for their official review. The planning commission did submit comments to the supervisors last night and did ask that these comments be explored further and that to consider tabling the ordinance. So tonight, the ordinance has been advertised, and it's before the supervisors to take a vote.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll so moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I was at the PC meeting last night, and the purpose of, the main purpose of the change, I think, when we started this several months ago, was, has to do with the LED, not the LED billboards, the LED billboards that can change. If you've ever been on 202, you've probably passed one or two of them in either direction. And so we wanted to have the ordinance address that. I think the PC came up with a number of other issues that may improve it further, but I think that improvement is built in to what we have before us today. Can it be made better? Maybe you could, and that may take a lot more exploration. But I think the, at least where I read it, that it'll address the main reason for the changes that we intended.
That was my point.
Huh?
That's what I was gonna say.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were referring...
Any other discussion?
Chris. Sorry.
Sure. So I can hear you.
Hi, I'm Tom Comit, township landscape architect and also a certified planner. In the last six years, I've testified on behalf of nine municipalities on billboard challenges. And except for West Ham Township and Concord Township, who both settled the litigation, hence the billboards that used to go into 202 just south of Westchester Borough and the 102 to 2 south of Route 1. The other seven cases cost the municipalities in excess of $250,000 to defend the challenges. And today, I read the comments of the planning commission, which I think are excellent. However, given the potential risk that any municipality faces with electronic billboards, changeable copy signs, and so forth, I think it would be appropriate for the board, should the board be inclined to adopt the ordinance as currently written and advertised, that soon thereafter would take up the number of points that the planning commission raised, all of which I think are good. But when faced with the risk of however many months it might take to perfect the ordinance, my recommendation would be, don't take that risk. We don't need to spend money to defend on billboard challenges because there is no money to defend on billboard challenges for whatever the challenge might be to which the current proposed ordinance attempts to resolve. So that's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing seen none, I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I as well. So this passes.
I just wanted to make one point. The supervisors will take the comments from the planning commission, and we're going to discuss them with our consultants. And then we will come back to the planning, back to the board and let them know what our consultants say about the comments, if some should be implemented, changed, whatever it may be. And then if our consultants feel they should be implemented into the ordinance, then we'll amend it at that point.
Yes, John?
When does the new ordinance go into effect?
John, would you introduce yourself to our...
In five days, John.
Our secretary...
My name is John Hayrick, resident of Kandanda Township.
Thank you.
Five days.
Five days from...
Today.
Lisa, would you introduce us to the rental ordinance, please?
Yes, last year, we adopted a rental ordinance, which required inspection of rental units every year to make sure that they meet life safety requirements. We decided to change that so that if the tenant doesn't change, the inspection will be every three years. If the tenant changes, then it'll be at that time. The other thing that we're changing is that you only have to register every three years again, unless your tenant changes, then you have to register again with the new tenant information. We found that this makes more sense, not only from the township's perspective, but also for the renters, and this is pretty common in the county with rental inspections.
May we have a motion to that effect, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion with the board? Any other discussion? Seeing hearing none, I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As well as I am, none opposed, it passes. Next item is the investment policy.
I have been working with our business advisory committee on creating an investment policy and an investment plan for the township funds. So the business advisory committee did create an investment policy, and the purpose of the policy is to invest its funds in a manner which will provide the highest investment return with the maximum security while maintaining, while meeting the daily cash flow needs of the township and to comply with all state statutes governing the investment of public funds. The investment policy applies to all financial assets of Kennett Township organized into funds which cannot be commingled. As such, investment portfolios created from cash generated by these funds should be maintained as separate accounts. So we did... This has been sent to the supervisors, and we asked that you adopt the policy so that we have it in place and that we can follow the policy with our investments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we have a fairly high bank account, and I think if we make more judicious choices in terms of investment, we can try to reap the most return we can. Obviously, in today's climate, it's not gonna be very large, but it'll be larger than what we've been doing in the past, so appreciate it. And all these investments are all funded by the FDIC insured?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Go.
Yes, a question for Lisa. Is this the first time the township has enacted an investment policy?
Yes.
Toward its assets? Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Our Kaiser residence, I assume what you're doing is ladder-ing your investments? They're all insured, is that basically what you're doing?
That's correct, and we'll have an investment company do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As well as I am, it passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is police force. And, well, Lisa, you want to introduce it first, please?
Yes. As everyone in this room probably knows, we've been working on a regional police study with Kennett Borough, New Garden Township, and then Westburg Borough, London Grove joined in. And we've been going round and round about the regional study for about a year. And it's come to the point that it seems that we're not all coming together on the study. I can't officially say that the study is dead, but I do know that a few of the participants are no longer interested in participating in the study due to the costs. And without all the participants in the study, the township cannot participate in a regional group. It seems that we're down to maybe two townships that could participate, which does not make it feasible financially for us to do that. So we have been discussing for quite some time that we do need to address our police needs in the township. As Chief Nol can attest, we, our police are busy all day long. We have more crime in this township, whether it be drugs, break-ins, domestics, than you would imagine. And it's very important to provide police coverage. So we have discussed this at length with the supervisors. We decided we are not ready to go 24/7, but we are ready to provide coverage, at least in the main times, which would be 6:00 AM to about 2:00 AM. So we have decided that we would like to hire three more full-time police officers, which would be under the direction of Chief Nol. And we've started that process. We've... Chief Nol and I have been interviewing police officers a couple of weeks ago. So we wanted to just discuss it with the public tonight and let you know our thoughts on this and see if the supervisors have any more comments on it. Bill?
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
We don't have a motion on the floor yet.
Okay.
Are you finished? Thank you. Can we get a motion, please? We move ahead and hire those three people. I'll second it.
Those three people. To hire up to three police officers, following them being interviewed, vetted, tested, all of the things that goes in, that go into hiring a police officer, and bringing those names back to the board for approval.
So moved.
You are easy, Bob.
And I've seconded it. Okay, so now we can have discussions with the board, and then we're gonna go out to the audience.
And I'm relatively new, although after a year and a half, it's hard to say that, I'm too new, but I do remember one of the lessons that they gave new supervisors statewide is that a police force, as it expands, can account for a large percentage of a township's budget. And I do understand that the needs of the township are growing. I'd just like to grow the police force in a more gradual rate. So on a, at least where I look at it from the usage, we previously, up until 10 years ago, had no police force. Five years ago, we had one, the last couple of years, we had two, which doubled it. But I think we, I would feel comfortable going up to three and seeing how it went. I guess I'd like to hear, you know, why four? Or I just feel like we should do it in a more gradual fashion.
I wanted to point out, from my observation, when I first came on the, when I first ran as supervisor, there was a lot of discussion about whether we should have a police force at all because, hey, state police are just down the road, and they get here pretty quickly. My experience is that they are down the road, but they don't get here very quickly. And the average speed is to, if you make a phone call to the township, unless they happen to be cruising in the area, it's upwards of an hour for the state police to get here. I'm cognizant of one recent event where there was a large group of young people that congregated late at night in the area. And it was pretty clear there was gonna be some violence, and we called the state police. And it took an hour before they were able to get to that location, which is central to the township. I don't find that adequate. And our needs, this was in the, this was in the late evening. I think that we have to be more proactive to protect our needs, and so I'm talking, as Lisa said, 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Uh, 2:00 AM, 2:00 AM. Later on in the morning, I guess we take our chances. And recognizing that we also have, if we're there, we have the resources of the borough to look to, to meet some of our police needs. But we will have to be proactive, and so our expectation is instead of an hour, of a couple of minutes. And that becomes very important. And we're to be able to get that kind of coverage is gonna take that kind of personnel to cover. We've vetted this through as a board. We've done it with, on the discussions that we've had in relation to regional police trying to define what our needs are, and with the detailed input from former Chief McCarthy, so you can tell we've been talking about this for a while, and with our new chief, Nol, as to what our needs are. And so this was what was recommended. I certainly agree with my colleague that starting down this road, it's kind of a slippery, slippery path, and so we have to be careful. And we've been looking at this very carefully, even going to the point of talking about regionalization. But I think that this is, this is not an end decision. It can, we can cut back, we can go forward, we have to be careful what we do. But I think we need to establish a baseline. And with that in mind, I'm gonna vote in favor of this motion.
Could I ask, are we allowed, if we have four police officers, to cut back? As, as the chairman mentioned, we are? Because my understanding that we're somewhat limited when it comes to police, whether we can adjust the size of our force or not.
I believe we are allowed to adjust the size of our force.
If you have too many, and there's absolutely nothing to do, and there's, you know, you don't need that many, then, you know... Although I think that... don't need that many, then, you know, although I think that, and I want to look into that a little more before telling you that, yeah, sure, you're free to hire and fire, but you will. Usually, there are criteria for termination, and it may not just be, we don't think we need you, you know, once they're duly appointed.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, I don't want to make that representation at this point without including their.
Any other comments from the board?
I was going to comment on the candidates, some good diversity in what they've got. So, I think the three people they're looking at are Wilmer Flahell.
Okay.
I have, I have no doubt about that. But...
Bill?
Yes, Bill McGlocklin, Kennett Township resident. I'm confused with the numbers, because I thought at the time when Acting Chief Nolte was here, you hired two officers.
Part-time.
That's my question. So, I was wondering, does it go to five now, or?
No.
Okay. How does, what is the eventual number you're going to end up with in terms of number of people?
Well, currently, it'll be four.
Four, okay.
Mr.?
Mike Elling, Kennett Township. What's the fully loaded cost of these new people, and where will they be housed?
They will be housed upstairs in the township building. We have, we already have an area that will be turned into the police department.
My old office.
And our, the cost for our budget, our current budget for the police is about $300. It's going to go up about $100,000 total.
$100,000 represents three new people?
No, it, our current budget represents Chief McCarthy, and now Chief Nolte. So...
And two part-time.
And, yeah, so we would be removing, when you change the numbers around, it only increases at $100,000 when you change it around. We don't have to buy any more vehicles. We don't have to buy a new building.
Okay, uniforms?
Uniforms, yes.
Joe?
Jerem Duffy, Kennett Township. Just to take, take Mr. Ellings' point a little further. So, could you break down, per officer, per year?
I can't break that down yet, because we haven't come up with agreements with the officers that we are looking at as far as their salary. We have, we have not...
In general sense, maybe?
Well, two, two...
$100,000 each?
No, no. Two of the officers are new to the police world, and they, they have a lot less experience, so they would start out a lot lower. And one officer is more experienced, so he would start out higher. It may be, might be $200,000 for all three, or around that.
Plus whatever the chief and other cars and insurance and so...
No, no. Do we need any more cars?
No.
And that would include their, all their benefits?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's not concrete, remember?
No, no.
We're working.
I understand.
I think there's some questions or comments over here. Yes?
Linda Carter, Kennett Township. I was, I was listening to Dr. Luffin talking about, is there a way to proceed more cautiously, which, you know, maybe that's condensed over a period of time, but to, you know, to add, I guess, my math, that you're going through really two full-time people to four. I don't know. I'm wondering if there's another scenario to proceed more cautiously. And are we budgeted for all of this?
Well, unfortunately, our budget for this year for the police department is totally out of whack due to many situations. So, I would say, no, this year, not. Where, you know, they wouldn't be hired until August, so we would have four months that it would not be budgeted, but it would be budgeted for next year.
I mean, I'm not against adequate police force. Don't get me wrong, I am. I'm just trying to think about how we move forward, you know, in a reasonably conservative manner, yet meet the township.
Yes, Chief?
Just one minor comment, just going to talk about the staffing levels and how we approach that number. In police service in 2015, there is a significant concern about officer safety. So, what we want to make sure that we don't bring an officer here and put them at a essentially health and safety risk. So, they can protect the public that they're required to protect. So, what we're trying to do is ensure that they have the adequate backup, so to speak, to allow them to perform their services that they're required to do. I'm going to say this, and, you know, this is kind of in the past. In the past situation, the staffing levels were not safe. You require one officer to work the street by himself. It is simply not safe. So, that's kind of a, just a general safety explanation about the staffing.
So, could you go and take that a little bit more forward? So, when Lisa mentioned that it'd be 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. coverage, would there be one person on that time? Would there be two on at the same time?
Well, you know, all figured the full-time, you know, you're getting a 40-hour-a-week person. So, you have to look at the demands for services, which I am able to do by documenting our reports and stuff. I can generate a report that tells me what are peak services requirements are. And then you basically try to apply your staffing level to those services. So, my application to applying the schedule and the staff to the schedule is the demand for service, the I that we're trying to cover from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Two a.m.
And then, I'm sorry. 2:00 p.m. Yeah, we're stuck on 2:00 p.m. But, so anyway, so if you look at the staff that we have, you look at your call I, I mean, your service demands at that period of time, and so you're trying to apply your staffing that, do we have coverage, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. seven days a week with that current staff? No, we will not, because that will not be enough added with staff to do it. So, there may be days where we're on a short cover, you know, maybe only, you know, an eight-hour period, and then the next day, we might be close to a 20-hour coverage day. And that, as staffing increases, you can fill our staff up. That's, that's kind of an explanation, a little bit on the coverage.
Yes, Bill Shelton, resident and member of the Safety Committee here in the township. We've been discussing in our group meetings, the regional police study for probably the last six months. We have not submitted to you a report yet about that, but we want to, I personally want to commend you for the decision you're making to move forward with more officers. And I also want to comment a little bit about this, about the discussion of backup and the safety element of it. Chief Nolte has to have a backup if he goes out on call, or any officer goes out on call, that he can absolutely, he or she can absolutely rely on. And a part-time employee, or if he's, or if the person is working one party only on a shift, they could be in a situation where whoever they're stopping for a road incident or anything else, might think they could get the upper hand over a single officer on one of our roads at night. If there's backup there, that, that makes our officers much safer. It has to be backup that he, we can all rely on, and that means some, that's work together. And working part-time, while that's a good Band-Aid solution against nothing, having a full-time officer, now becoming full, we're fully aware of our township conditions, the way we situate things, even our local ordinances and everything else that we need to do, moving in a direction of full-time employment for now four sworn officers would be an excellent step. We very much share the point of view that building officers over time is the way to go. But that will happen even in the hiring of three, even if you were to do it tomorrow, because there's going to be different levels of experience that they're bringing. I don't know who they are, but they're bringing different levels of experience, therefore, different readiness to move into a full-time role, which will build for us. The best way to train these officers is on the job with Chief Nolte. I want to thank you again.
Thank you. Your comment reminds me of something I think I should also mention, just so the record is clear. We are not, assuming that this, that this motion passes, we are not thereby locking ourselves out of, of regional police. Because whoever we have serving as a police officer, when we go, not saying we will, but theoretically, when we go into a regional force, that police force would go into the regional police force. So, we're not, our investing in an officer today does not preclude us from going forward if we were at that time choosing to go forward. Yes, sir?
Richard, ex-code enforcement, not a resident of township, sorry. Anyway, I'd like to say that when code enforcement goes out, it's nice to have the continuity and the support of our police out there. There's certain areas we go into, and we do coordinate at this point in time, and have the ability to have a phone call, have someone there at our beck and call. This township is very diverse, and I worked in a township previously where we worked very closely with the police force and a lot of our code enforcement. And it's nice to come back into the township that I've had the support of Chief Nolte and the other officers that are part-time officers at this point in time. And it's, it's very enlightening to be able to make that call and say, hey, I'm up here in no-man's land. Can you come and give me a hand? Those things don't look too good. So, but I must say, I do appreciate them being our beck and call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get to you, I'll get to you in a minute. Yes?
That's Thomas, Kennett Township resident and also business owner in the township. And I can concur with what you're saying as far as the state police coverage, because we've had alarms go off at our business, two, three, four in the morning, and sometimes I'm going by myself because my husband's out of town and so forth. And I, they don't want me to enter our business with the alarm going off, and I've sat there three, four hours and never had a state police officer arrive. And then it's sunup, and then I just go in the building, because obviously, one of, somebody's in there? I don't think so. But I actually would support more officers being hired, because I fear that they go, okay, we're only going to be, they're only going to have coverage till 2:00 a.m., and we got that law from 2:00 to 6:00. Are we going to have more crime in that timeframe? Because they know the state police aren't going to come.
Yeah. Good point. Thank you. Was there a question or a comment back here on this side? Okay.
Question, Mimi, our township resident. Just to clarify, my mind, since everybody seems to agree that the police need to have backup when they're out there on the street, does this mean that you would always have two officers on at all times? And if you don't, then they don't have that backup. So, how do you fix that?
Chief Nolte?
Unfortunately, without a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week staff to cover two personnel 24 hours a day, there is going to be times where you simply don't have the resources to have that second backup on the job. Yes, it is a safety issue, and I won't ever back down from that comment. My responsibility is to this agency and also to the officers that work for it. So, we utilize the resources we have. They're full-time employees, they're 40 hours a week. We look at our service demands, and we try to appropriately staff the best that we can. Will I sit here and say that there will be a period of time where there'll be one officer, and without a second guy coming in? Yeah, that's going to be, that's the truth. But we'll see as the staffing changes. Maybe there's an increase in staffing, maybe not. But to answer your question, no, not all the time.
I believe, sorry, I believe, I mean, that's part of the advantage of a regional police force, is that you can call, even if they're in a different zone, depending on what's needed. There's, I guess, greater communication flexibility in that.
So, do you think, though, that if you had an officer that needed a backup, that they'd come faster for him than they would for your business alarm going off?
No, I was going to make the point that if he, if he's on duty, and he has, as Mr. Stevens explained, 24 kids in the middle of the street having a fight, he's going to call Kennett Borough, who's right up the street, his backup. He's not going to call the state police. So, if he has to go to a situation like that, that is potentially dangerous, he's not going to go by himself.
You know, law enforcement, I'm sorry, one more comment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Law enforcement is a cohesive unit, even though the municipality that we're employed by is different, whether it's the Borough or New Garden or whomever. But at the end of the day, we have a health and safety obligation to whomever we're dealing with. So, do I have the, am I afforded the privilege of having, pressing a Borough officer or state police officer or any officer to assist with anything we have occurring in Kennett Township? Yes, we're afforded that privilege. The, it is simply that, a privilege. They're funded by someone else. They're employed by someone else. And at the end of the day, Kennett Township is not their problem, for lack of a better term. But we're afforded that privilege to have their resources. In the same way, our resources will be at their service as well as we be.
Art, I think that you had a comment?
Thank you. Art Kaiser, township. So, I'm curious about the chain of command or the chain of supervision as far as this increasing police force. So, from, from the chief's concern, who's his supervisor? Is there a main supervisor?
I have his supervisor. And then ultimately, the supervisors have to be.
So, addressing our town manager, township manager, is there, with the increasing police force, does it make sense to have a, for better word, citizen review board, or for a better, I don't know what the better word is, but is there, is there a possibility of increasing or getting, you know, that, that management ability to include more township residents?
It's a little bit early to make that kind of a determination.
No, I mean, it's not a determination.
Just a second, just a second. It may be at some point that that would be appropriate. We're trying to do this whole thing in, in careful steps. And we just have a new chief today. We're talking about hiring new staff today, and whether we ultimately decide it would be appropriate to have a civilian review board or some other group, is something that time and effect is not on the agenda for today.
Thank you.
I wanted to make one other comment to that. That's something we can discuss once it's established, but we have to be cautious, because the regular citizen is not an expert in police. So, I don't know if ultimately, we would establish a citizens board to review the police, because, you know, that's an entirely different thing than just having a volunteer committee. You have, you would have to have a board of police experts if you're going to have somebody review the police. But I'm not saying the supervisors can't discuss it. They absolutely can at that time.
Ted, I think you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to say that Ted Moxon, township president. I was just going to suggest that if we do, at least at the moment, have a safety committee that exists that could begin to take a tiny role in that area. Where, and they're all, you know, citizen volunteers on the safety committee, who could have some, you know, modicum of input into some kind of review, maybe on an annual basis.
They've been doing that.
Right.
Previously, and I have absolutely no doubt they will continue to perform it.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
David Shepherd, township resident. Is there any kind of a formal mutual support agreement between adjacent townships and the township of the Borough?
We, for policing?
Yes.
We are working on one right now with the Borough. We actually have a mutual aid agreement for some things, but we're updating it to improve, to make a broad, make it broader. So, there, that will be in place.
That's, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Bob Waters, a Kennett resident. If we have an increasing crime rate like this...
If we have an increasing crime rate like this, could we add the incidents to the township alert, so that residents could be more aware of what's going on? For example, if there's a rash of burglaries?
We do that already. We can't send out alerts for every incident, but we do post the police, monthly police reports when there are burglaries that are going on. We do send out mass emails for that.
And I think the chief's gonna start a bi-weekly plotter?
Yeah.
You're gonna start to see a lot more information start to come out. It's, your first information, you need to identify the platforms where the information's gonna come out, and also the proper, you know, easy to read sorting through, you know, in my report, there was 285 police incidents. Oh, there's 285 of interest may only be 25 or 30 or 50, I'm just throwing a hypothetical number out. So if I'm broadcasting 285 of those incident numbers, it becomes a statistical type of report where, if you're gonna read it, it becomes a very boring type of report to read. So we're trying to, we're trying to put out the information in a platform that is easy to read and informative.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just coming from personal experience, my own work burglarized a couple of years ago. If I had known that, you know, there's been a lot of robberies in the neighborhood, so to speak, I would have been a little bit more vigilant. I think getting something a month, like after a rash of robberies, really doesn't make me that aware.
Thank you. It's 10 after 9:00. I was hopeful we could finish up this meeting by 9:30, and we haven't gotten to the library, and most of the people in this room, I'm guessing, are here about the library. So I, I would like to move along and vote on the pending motion of, unless there's something that somebody has not had a chance to say that hasn't been heard yet, I'd like to move along. Okay. All in favor?
Point of order, please. Your, this is, your motion is subject to your council's review of an issue?
I'm sorry?
No.
No.
No. I thought you said that you were going to review a particular question that came up.
He's, he's just gonna review it, that wasn't part of the motion at all.
Well, the answer to what your review would perhaps influence the outcome of the motion or not?
I don't...
Question was, can you remove a police officer?
That's right.
Just because you don't need him? And the answer is probably no. There is an Act, Act 144, that governs the suspension, removal, furloughing, and reinstatement of police officers in townships of the second class that I need to take a look at to answer that question fully, but that doesn't necessarily go to the motion to move forward with the process of hiring three additional police officers.
Furthermore, Mr. Crowe, I forgot to come back to you, I'm sorry.
My question was answered, please go ahead.
The resolution is to authorize to hire up to three more, and we will certainly get a clarification as to the ability to fire and hire, but I don't think that it is, as Lisa pointed out, I don't think the one is germane to the other.
I disagree, but that's all right.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
What do I say, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to the last official item on the new, on the new business, and that's library and board appointments. Before we get into the substance of that, I can't go and identify everybody that's in the room, but I, I do note that the head librarian, Donna Murray, is here, and Susan McCallas is here, board president. Yes. Who else am I missing? Yes?
Karen Evans, board member.
Good.
And Joan Webb, treasurer.
Yes, thank you. Yes, okay. And I also note that Mayor Matt Fettig from the Borough is here as well. So we have, we have a lot of interested people as well as those that haven't introduced themselves.
We may go past 9:30?
So, getting started, I believe that Dr. Left, you had a comment that you wanted to make?
That's allowed, I'd make a comment before we start a motion. So, I think Kennet Library's been on my mind for a while, and so I had some thoughts about saving Kennet's library. Kennet Township supports the Kennet Library with a dedicated tax of over $150,000 per year, and our residents utilize the library more than any other municipality. Our residents in this board of supervisors strongly support the library. Better than 15 years ago, the library announced that it had grown its facilities and began exploring options for expansion at the current site or relocation. That process has generated much discussions and strong feelings. That's not surprising to me. When I lived in Woodbridge, Connecticut, we were in a similar situation, and it was only after 10 years of discussion in one township, followed by focused and extensive consultation with the public, that a new library was eventually built. What did surprise me, though, was that recently, the mayor of Kennet Square, who's, in our presence, Matt Fettig, whose office is just blocks from the library, went public with a request for appointing a member to the library board, and raised questions as to how the library uses its funds. He further suggested that withholding funding for the library might, might be in order should questions of fiscal responsibility not be fully answered. From what I've read in the press, according to the library's director, who's with us tonight, Kennet Borough's funding decision might jeopardize programs at the library, programs that Kennet Township residents value and use. Thus, we urgently need to learn how to protect Kennet Township's residents interested in the library. Couple of months ago, the library board held a public meeting, which Scotty Stevens and I attended, with the purpose of putting to rest questions regarding the running of the library, summarizing the plans for the new library and beginning a new, open and transparent relationship with the people it serves. What became clear at the meeting is that despite monumental efforts by the board and staff, the community still views the library leadership through distrustful eyes, and many questions have yet to be satisfactorily answered. Throughout the meeting, three main themes of public dissatisfaction were evident. The lack of trust in the board's fiscal management integrity, the lack of community involvement in decision-making with regards to important issues such as name changes and plans for the new library, and concern in the board composition and effectiveness in decision-making We all want a vibrant, active library, one that we can proudly support. Lingering perceptions that we have with the library board, however well-intentioned, including if not consulting with its community on major decisions before they're made, and allegations that may, that may not use funds for their intended purposes, results, even if they're unfounded, and a lack of trust of that board, and never-ending, non-productive conversations between the library and the community. So how do we move forward? How do we establish trust in the function of the library board so that a community can be proud of and enthusiastically support our library? And so that also others, surrounding communities can also feel the same and also support the library. So I'd like to suggest a number of things tonight. One is that a task force be created to examine all issues with regards to funding, board composition, and the board's decision-making process, so as to devise us an option and help us to proceed. The task force should get input from the Chester County Library services, as they have experience across many public libraries. Within 30 days, I'd like to hear how Kennet Townships and other monies are currently being used and accounted for in 2015. At the end of the year, I'd like a recommendation of what is the appropriate funding for 2016 from Kennet Township and from other municipalities and the public. Recommendations should also be made with regard to improved board composition, manner of public input to the board, and board communication to the public. Cooperation of the library and the library board in this task force is desired, as this action should be seen as a means to definitively put to rest any lingering questions of an inappropriate activity and reassure the public of new and effective library board processes in an effort to begin the process of building more effective governance of the library. I, oop, I don't know. I would like to create a motion to create, if the Kennet Borough municipality creates a task force, I'd like to call it Save the Library Task Force, but you can call it what you like, with representation of Kennet Township, and also invite representation from Kennet Borough and other concerned municipalities that use the library. We have other things going on tonight, but...
I see you making that motion.
But, yes.
Okay. Give me a second. Thank you. Do you have a comment you want to make at all, Bob?
It depends what happens, so I'm all, all week.
Okay. All right. No surprise to anybody in this room, I have a comment.
What did I?
Circumstances relating to the library, circumstances relating to the library are concerning to the Kennet Township board of supervisors and need to be addressed. However, it is vital to unscramble the issues to make sense of what really is at stake. In that regard, the possible location of the new library does not enter into this discussion. There are compelling reasons for the library to be in either the Borough or in the township. That is a decision that the library board, in significant discussion with its patrons, users, and municipalities, must address. Both the Borough and the Township will support the decision as to location when it is finally made. I don't mean to speak for the Borough, but I personally believe that to be true. It is not a part of the current discussion, current meaning right now. The first issue to address is township funding. This board of supervisors has not addressed whether to cancel funding to the library. Such a decision would only be made in public and after serious and meaningful discussion. It is the intent and desire of this board to continue to provide funding to the library as it has in the past. The next issue is whether the board of supervisors values the work of the staff of the library and the performance of its mission. The reports we received all suggest that the staff is deeply committed and effective in its professional task of serving the residents of the many municipalities which are a part of this library's constituency. The published numbers all suggest a successful outreach to those users and commendable performance of those tasks. Having said that, it is disturbing to learn that those numbers may be misleading. I advise that students are counted, both coming into the library and leaving. Thus, one student coming and going is counted twice. If that student comes in twice and leaves twice, that amounts to four serviced. However, by my reckoning, that is one student serviced, not four students serviced. If the recent 2,000 number is calculated by the many times the same person went through the door, ingress or egress, then I would be very disappointed, because it is not an accurate portrayal of the actual service to the constituency of the library. And while it can be argued that the number reflects, quote, "units of service," end quote, and not individuals being serviced, there still is no reason to count the same person coming in and going out. This needs to be clarified. The next issue to be considered is the functioning of the library board. It is important to remember that the board is not an old boys, old girls' club empowered to do as it pleases and at its whim. It is a public library using federal, state, county, and municipal funds to service the library needs of its constituents, the residents of those municipalities. It is also a charitable organization receiving significant federal and state tax benefits. It is also answerable to those private individuals who provide it with funds, including capital improvement donations and operating funds gifts. To all of these entities, this board has a fiduciary duty, the highest duty recognized by the law. The board of supervisors of Kennet Township has lost faith in the board of the library in carrying out its duties according to that standard. Let me itemize these concerns, which are based upon what we've been able to learn through the library board statements and other sources. The board is disingenuous. Members of the library board, including the president and vice president, met with Kennet Township and members of Kennet Square Borough Council to discuss a possible home in the Borough. Both sides left that meeting having agreed, having agreed to consider to commit to a plan regarding Borough property as the site of a new library. The Borough returned prepared to commit. The library group came back, reporting that they were thinking about it. On two successive meetings thereafter, that board continued to hold to the thinking position. At no time was there a request from the library board for a formal proposal. It was not yet answered, it has not yet answered, the Borough has to the charge it committed itself to do, which is disappointing in and of itself. However, in an email received just this week, the president of the library board acknowledged that the board has had committed to use the Wayward Lane site for the proposed new library, a fact not previously stated in our group meetings. At one of the meetings of the Borough, the library and the township, the library said its next board meeting was on a Wednesday. The other attendees noted a conflict with the Wednesday because they had other obligations yet wanted to attend the library board meeting. We subsequently learned that the library board meeting, in fact, occurred on the preceding Tuesday to that Wednesday, a day when all of us could have attended, but the library board never advised us of its change of plans, and then went into executive session as well. Me and you may have had an opportunity to read about that executive session. The board continues to tell the world that it requires 100 parking spaces and that this is maintained by state requirements for grants and funding. Curiously, the library does not currently have such a parking monopoly in the Borough. And in fact, a call to the state library oversight group said there was no such requirement. The library assertion is apparently disingenuous and self-contrived. The board lacks professional standards. The library board is so poorly managed that nearly 10 board members have resigned in the recent past, and the current board acknowledges that it has trouble finding new board members because of the reputation of the current board. Qualified and respected members of the township community advise that they want nothing to do with this board because it was inappropriate and abusive behavior. The free and open use of expletives and crudities are just one example of this lack of professional behavior. The fact that it has intentionally driven every professional, professionally qualified member of the board to resign is yet another example of its amateur status. It is interesting that the vice president of that board is in the process of moving out of the area, but has failed to tell any of his fellow board members of his plans. The board violates its duty to those who have contributed money. This board annually runs an operating deficit and acknowledges that it has found the necessary funds to balance the budget annually and to do additional repairs and maintenance, but doesn't freely acknowledge that those funds are taken from the income generated by the principal contributed during the initial fundraising effort for the building of the library at Ways Lane. The explanation is that the interest is not covered by the commitment to preserve the principal contrib- principal contributed. However, unless special arrangements were agreed upon in advance by those donors, the restrictions on the principal would apply to the interest it generates as well under Pennsylvania law. Thus, this Library Board has violated and continues to violate its trust and duty with those capital funds and their contributors. We also note that the Library Board created a formula for fair share and had manipulated its bylaws to control under what circumstances municipalities can appoint board members. Both Kennet Square Borough and Pacopsen illustrate this phenomenon of being denied the opportunity to appoint representatives to the Library Board. This is totally inappropriate and only leads to misunderstandings, hurt feelings, and inadequate The Board is not able to manage the business of the library. This Board continues to operate in a deficit manner year after year, using its resources including capital fund interest to cover those overages. The Library recently did a face update to the interior of the building. Part of that effort was to remove the asbestos within. It was later learned that not enough money was committed to accomplish that task, and much of the asbestos remains within the public and private areas of the library. The contract was not properly considered and negotiated. The Board is not financially transparent. The Library Vice President advised the Township staff and supervisors that the Library did not have up-to-date financial records. Members of the Township volunteer staff with significant accounting and financial acumen requested whatever could be generated, recognizing that both the county and the state required current financial accounting materials. After four efforts, documents were produced by the Treasurer that appeared to meet standard accounting requirements. A subsequent discussion with Library Board officers revealed that it is the professional staff which prepares those accounting documents, and that the Board has limited input to oversee preparation and to review the contents because, quote, "We are volunteers and don't have time to do that," end quote. It is important to note that the capital funds are not accounted for but are maintained off the books. How that money is managed and used is not information that is available to anyone except perhaps a select group of board members. The Board fails to provide its contributors, including the municipalities, of its financial situation. The Library Board fails to produce current and complete accounting records, only after numerous requests are any documents produced and they require close scrutiny. The Board acts without considering the interests of its constituents. The most obvious example of this is the secret changing in the name of the library. Curiously, the county system has not yet received any documentation of a legal change, neither has any municipality. It was only after the fact that the change was disclosed and acknowledged to the public. It is for this reason that I have referenced the library by its legal name, the Bayard-Taylor Memorial Library. All of the events referenced herein also serve as examples of the ongoing lack of transparency of this Board and its total disregard for the users, patrons, and municipalities who use and support this library. The Board fails to use accurate statistics to support its position. Please refer to the earlier section discussing the statistics used to count users based upon passage through the doors. We call upon the Library Board to fully and openly repudiate these understandings by the municipalities involved. Document for us why we are incorrect in interpreting these circumstances. It is for these and other reasons that this Board of Supervisors no longer has faith in the Board of the Library. This Board of Supervisors takes with the gravest of responsibility its duty to its citizens in contributing money to the Bayard-Taylor Memorial Library, particularly when there is no apparent oversight over the use of that money, no responsibility over the management of that money, no complete and accurate disclosure to the public. The easy solution to this dilemma would be to withhold the money we contribute, but we acknowledge that such a solution would more adversely affect the uses of the library than the Board. Further, we believe that the individual members of the Library Board genuinely care about the ability of the library to carry out its mission and its duty to its users. With that vision in mind, this Board of Supervisors here expresses its desire to work with the Board of the Library to resolve these problems in a manner that supports the Library Board, the Library staff, and its patrons and users. We want the position of the Mayor of Kennet Square Borough requesting the formation of a task force comprised of prominent and neutral members of the Kennet region, and we support it. If Borough Council adopts such a plan, Kennet Township would agree to join in the formation of such a task force, to be comprised of such members and a representative of the county library system, to meet with and overview the actions of the Library Board and to perform an operations audit. If that Library Board will fully, openly, and candidly cooperate with that task force, Kennet Township will have no reason to withhold its tax funds from the operation of the library. Further, we will cooperate in the effort of the library to raise funds for building a new library. It is important to note that such a task force comprised of such neutral representatives removes all discussion of hidden agendas, manipulations, and sour grapes punishments. Those representatives would perform their duties whether ultimately the library is coming to Kennet Township or staying in the Borough. The whole point is the process. If the Library Board does not fully, openly, and candidly cooperate with the task force, then this Board of Supervisors will consider what additional options remain with it to address the behavior of the Library Board, including withholding tax money. Further, if the library refuses to seek the two representatives of Kennet Township to be appointed to serve on this Board tonight, the consequences will be significant to the Library Board. Clearly, there are serious issues that need to be clarified. This Board of Supervisors is committed to entering into a dialogue in good faith to confront these issues, and calls upon the Library Board to make the same commitment. We are anxious to work together in an open, timely, and candid manner and anticipate a cordial interaction of respect and shared goals. There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, to create, I guess, more specifically, I guess, a motion is to direct Lisa to, if the Borough creates a library task force at their next council meeting, that for Kennet Township to join that task force and find appropriate members.
And that, that's your second? Oh, second, yeah, okay. Any discussion by the Board? We sort of worked out, but is there any discussion by the Board?
I've got a couple of other motions, but not on this one, no other.
I just want to re-echo your saying to withhold the money. They sent a message to the Board, but you probably heard operations and work, we don't really have a problem with the operations.
Okay.
I mean, that's sort of why I wanted to wait 30 days to hear back from the task force, with they could look into that quickly versus deciding now or soon, or something like that.
Susan Mackie-Callis, President of the Kennet Public Library Board. So first off, I wanted to say that the four folks that are here tonight, obviously Donna, the Director, and three board members, are here because we were on your agenda. It said that you would be appointing two members to the Library Board, and we were here, in fact, to welcome them and to start the process of orienting them to the Board. We certainly had no idea that you were going to make such a motion, obviously levying such charges against the Library Board. I was taking some mental notes as you went through. However, I don't have a prepared statement to respond to your prepared statement, and I would certainly welcome the opportunity to have a copy of your statement. And certainly, I mean, there may be some of these that if you want, we could respond to tonight, but I would also welcome the opportunity to look this through and then provide specific point-by-point responses in writing to many of the issues that you raised here tonight. So, one thing that I, and I do hope that you will, of course, you know, appoint your two folks tonight, because again, that's why we're here, was to welcome them. But I will ask one question, and then I will make some comments, and I maybe will turn it over to my colleagues. My first question is a clarification. I certainly appreciate that you have commended the work of the staff and that acknowledging that withdrawing funding would only hurt the library, which is a vital resource that we all know for our community. So, thank you for acknowledging that. Thank you for saying that, of course, it's important that we all work together. Obviously, you are the biggest supporter of the library, we've said that again and again, but certainly, we're located in the Borough, so obviously, that's the place where we currently live. So, working effectively with the Township and the Borough has always been something that we're very conscientious about, try to be. So, thank you for saying that you want to work with us, we appreciate that. The only thing I would ask for a clarification is, and again, I'm not saying that this becomes the threat that you hold over our head or not, but our understanding is that you have a dedicated tax and that it's not the discretion of the Board of Supervisors to withdraw or reduce the funding for the library, and if that is not so, please clarify that.
Yes, we've reviewed what our ordinance provided for, and we do have, first of all, we would pay over, whatever we're going to pay over would be on an annual basis, so if we pay it today or we pay it December 31st, that's our discretion.
Sure.
Number one. Number two, we have the discretion as to what the amount would be that we would pay. It's on a, is a scale for it.
So, it's not a dedicated tax, the figure that was determined through a referendum?
That's correct.
Was not a dedicated?
Referendum stated clearly up to 2%.
Two mils.
Two mils, I'm sorry, up to, up to 2 mils.
Two tenths.
Two tenths.
Two tenths.
No.
It is two tenths.
No. The referendum set on the 2 mil, currently it's at 2 tenths.
Well, the referendum language "up to" means that in the Board's discretion, it can levy zero.
Really? So, but by our bylaws, one of your dedicated positions is because you have a dedicated tax that was passed by a referendum. I mean, certainly, we can discuss this at greater length, but this is news to us, because one of the reasons why you have one of your appointed board members is because you have that dedicated tax through the referendum process.
And if we didn't have that tax, we couldn't have that?
That particular one. And the second one that you have, of course, is because you basically meet your fair share of funding, and so those are the basis for those two representatives.
That's correct.
Right. So, that first point clearly is a point that we'd have to discuss, because that's not been our understanding, so.
We do have a dedicated tax, but we have the power to change what that amount is. So far, we are continuing to make those payments. So, we can talk about it, you can get a copy of the, what was adopted, you can see it for yourself, but so far, we're meeting all those standards.
So, you're saying that every year, you actually take a vote when you set your budget on what you want to contribute to the library in terms of this dedicated tax?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that has clearly not been our understanding, so obviously, we want to review the referendum that you have, because we were under the assumption that it was a pass-through tax that was a dedicated amount coming from Kennet Township.
That's the way we treat it.
That's the way you've chosen to treat it, you're saying, okay. That's new information to us, for sure. So, let's start with the way we count people that come through the door. Donna's here, and she can speak to this, but I know that CCLS uses this to report out service, and as you said, Scott, if you want to call it units of service rather than individual serves, that's the way we report out, because that's the way the Chester County library system expects us to report out. Donna, do you want to speak to that?
I'd like to answer that. We do not count people coming in and going out. We absolutely do not. We have, it's two separate counts in any case. We have an automatic people counter at the door, and it counts people coming in, it counts them once, and that is our visitor count. We don't use that to count our program attendance. What we do use is if someone has a program, they take a head count, and so, those are the numbers. That's where that 2,000 number comes from. If someone is in charge of a program, they count how many people are at the program. I think the issue that some people have is if a child attends a program on a Monday morning, that child is counted once. If a child then attends another program on a Wednesday night, that child is counted again. That is standard practice for counting library program attendance across the country. And the county had a committee a couple of years ago, because one library was thought to be perhaps padding their statistics, and we clarified. So, countywide, we have clarification on how we keep our statistics. It's set by the county, and it pretty much, except for some nuances, follows the way that libraries across the country count their statistics. Because if I have staff resources planning 10 programs, if we have the staff time and the materials, and perhaps an expert coming in, and they're planning 10 programs, and there are a group of, say, 50 kids, and they come to all those programs, if I tell you I spent a couple hundred dollars on 50 kids, that's not accurate. If I tell you I spent a couple hundred dollars on 50 kids times all those programs, do you see what I mean? It correlates more accurately to the resources that we've put into something. So, we want to have an accurate count to justify our resources. We also want to be in line with how every other library in the county is keeping their statistics. So, I don't know where this problem with how counting statistics comes from, but I can assure you that it's automatically counted, our visitors, so it's taken out of human hands, but also, for our programs, we just follow what the county says, I mean, they've clarified very specifically. We count, if it's a program for babies, we count the babies, but we also count the parents, because the parents are learning something too. For a program for babies, the parent might be learning, oh, this is a, this is a good way to read to our children, but we have to report out that way. We have to say, this many children attended a program, and this many adults attended that program, and then also for, we also report how many children, how many parents, how many teens, and how many adults. So, we keep very accurate accounting of who attends program, and it is in line with the way every other library keeps it.
Thank you, Donna.
I appreciate your clarification.
Is that, is that an acceptable answer to you? Does that make sense to you?
Does that answer your concern about how we count?
So, my, my second question would be that, why would you bring an unfounded charge? Like, that's a serious charge.
Can I answer your question? What she's telling me is a unit of service and not a patron, and it's not counted twice when you come in and when you go out.
But, was that not what you?
That's what I understood was going on, and so, that's what I wanted to clarify. And now, I understand. I appreciate that.
My question, I guess, is that you were insinuating that there was indiscretion, there was, you know, a matter of integrity, and if all she had to do is answer your question, why wouldn't you just ask the question instead of accusing someone or an organization of wrongdoing? I mean, why wouldn't you just send an email or pick up the phone? Donna, could you explain this to me, because there are some people that, you know, have some charges against you. Why wouldn't you just pick up the phone? I mean, you're talking about reaching out and building a relationship. You just blasted, or in a public meeting, without having any basis.
without having any basis. I just, you know, for somebody who's new to the area and this whole issue that you have, you have done absolutely nothing that I've seen to foster any, any step forward.
And I would actually, Scott, I would say the same thing about your next charge. When you say the board is disingenuous, when you talked about how members of the library board, including the president and vice president, met with Kennett Township and members of Kennett Square Borough to discuss possible home in the borough. Both sides left that meeting having agreed to consider to commit to a plan regarding borough property at the side, as the site of the new library. The borough returned prepared to commit. You said the library group came back, reported that they were thinking about it, and then we had two successive thinking about it meetings. And you're implying that we have done nothing, basically, that basically, at no time there was a, was there a request from the library board for a formal proposal. In fact, Scott, if you had asked me about that, I would have updated you with the fact that we did request a formal proposal from the borough. They provided such a document to us about a month ago. And then you asked for a quick response to that. And then we provided a detailed two-page letter. In fact, we had our lawyer, Joe Riper, help us write it. And then we waited for the response to that. Now, again, we subsequently learned that Joey Scalise was out of town for two weeks on vacation. And so, when he returned, he said, my borough did make a decision in response to the detailed letter that we had sent them in terms of our proposal, the conditions that we would have to have met if we could stay in the borough. And he says, I'm sorry, I was out of town for two weeks. I will get back to you. And in fact, I have been emailing him back and forth all week, copying Leon Spencer. So, if you had talked to me, you would have seen, in fact, that we were waiting for two weeks for a response from the borough. In fact, I can document for you many emails, bond back and forth.
That is, yeah.
Requesting, where is this response from the borough to our formal response? That our lawyer, Joe Riper, helped us craft three, three and a half weeks ago. So, to say that we have been thinking and thinking is completely inaccurate. And if you had spoken with me about this, I could have shown you the progress that we've been making in this conversation.
And I was at that meeting. I'm really disappointed at your report of those meetings, because I would disagree heartily.
Yep. I was there, too. And there are other people in this room who were at that meeting, at those meetings. And there's room to disagree. There's clearly two sides as to what happened and what was.
We did everything we were asked to do. We were asked to go back to our board and ask the board to reconsider a vote we'd taken over a year ago, and would they consider a conversation about remaining in the borough. And we did that.
And Lisa, in fact, we sent you a copy. We CC'd the letter that we had sent to the borough in the negotiation. Did you not share that with Scott?
That's not what he's, he's referring.
So, what is he talking about?
He's referring to the meeting that you're talking about.
But that's all the same issue.
But this is the same issue. We're taught, there was a discussion with the borough council about possibly staying in the borough. That's what that two-page letter was about. Point 1, 2, and 3, and 4.
He's talking about the meeting that we all came back to, and we all agreed that we would come back with an answer. And when we met again, the borough had an answer and the library didn't. That's what he's talking about.
I addressed that during that meeting. We're a board of nine people. As you said, we are not an old girls' network. I can't make a decision like that without the support and the vote of my board.
Did we have an offer?
And we had no offer in writing. What we were asked to do was ask if the board would consider reopening our discussion of our safe, which we did. And the board agreed to reopen the discussion. And so, we came back to hear what new information the borough had. I mean, we didn't even know how much, how much the property was. I mean, you don't buy a house without knowing how much it costs. How could we vote?
And, and the reopening of the discussion on staying in the borough was at our June meeting, which was the first time that we went into executive session since I had been president of the board in January. And the reason why we went into executive session was to discuss this possibility of a real estate offer from the borough to stay in the borough. And it was within 48 hours after our June meeting that we then sent that detailed letter, letter to the borough, CC'd it to you, Lisa, which was shared with you, Scott. So, I feel that your response is very disingenuous. We have been moving rapidly to follow up on that discussion that we had that started here in this room over many months ago. And in fact, all week, we've been in this discussion.
I mean, I understand that there is a lot of history. And I, believe me, I would never want to defend any past board member or any process that had been here. I'm not interested in doing that. However, for you to indict, you know, new board members or people that have put a lot of honesty and integrity into whatever work that they are doing for the board, I think is just incredibly ignorant. It really is. For you to question the integrity, my integrity, you asked for financial statements. I gave you financial statements from 2011 in detail with investments. I'm the one who recommended to have the investments put on the balance sheet. So, for you to sit there and say that, well, there's no transparency, they appear to be the correct, of course, they're correct. I gave you the backup from CCLS. Not, if you want to condemn all the things that happened before, that's fine. I'm certainly not going to sit here and defend them. But for you to indict, certainly me as a treasurer, is incredibly ignorant. I've spoken with you, you know, for a few moments once.
It took like four times before I finally got those financials.
I sent you financial statements in detail, line item, for the last four years.
After four times asking for them, they kept coming in.
I didn't get one request from you. I told you I would send them to you, but I had to get all of the statements. I collated, I put them all together in one format, so you, so it would be easier for you to audit, instead of going through paper. I gave you an Excel file. It was incredibly detailed, all categorized for the last four years. So, for you to say that there isn't transparency, what more would you want?
First time I asked for, not the fourth.
That's not what I asked. You said that there wasn't transparency. What more specifically would you want? What would you expect?
Are your capital funds in those?
Haven't you looked at them? If you asked for them four times, you haven't looked at them?
What I saw did not have the capital funds.
Yes, they are certainly in those documents. They absolutely are. Scott, as you know, the new board, really, the new leadership took over in January, and we have been working very hard to professionalize this board. And it's not me to cast dispersions. I'm always saying the old board, the old board, the old board. But the point is, the board that I inherited did not have the investment portfolio as part of the budget. And when we got Joan on board as our treasurer, because she's a professional CFO in her day job, she recommended we do just that, and she's working to make that happen. We also were not sending financial reports, nor were we posting them on the web. And that was one of the things that we voted on fairly recently to do. In fact, if you look at our website now, the first quarter financial data is up there, posted under March. Our second quarter financial data will be posted under our June month, fairly soon, as soon as we get the, I guess, the final data from CCLS. Joan produced for us a four-year lookback, which had never been done, at least to my knowledge, ever.
She hasn't, she hasn't.
Right. And as you know, Scott, I instituted a policy when I took over as board of emailing all of the township supervisors. I sent my first email out in April. I'd only been a president for four months, giving you, here's our new strategic plan, here's an update on the town hall sessions that we had run, here's what we've been up to, up to over these past few months. I just recently sent another email, providing all the financial data that we're talking about. So, my plan is, every couple of months, to basically do that, to send to all the supervisors updates of all the kind of the goings-on at the library. We've also reached out to the township supervisors, asking them how frequently they want financial updates. Pensbury, for example, wants it twice a year. You apparently want it once a month, so you're getting the financial information once a month. Other townships have requested it once a quarter, so we will be providing it to them once a quarter. We certainly understand that over 50% of our budgets comes from our eight townships. So, obviously, you're an important stakeholder for us in the library, and we want to do all we can to improve the communications, right? But again, this new board has really been working to correct lots of the wrongs, if you will, from the past, right? You claimed, I think there's some, some kind of notion floating around that this board goes into executive session all the time. The only time, as I said, that we went into executive session since I've been president in January was last month. And that was, in fact, to consider a real estate offer from the borough at your prompting and the borough's prompting for us to reconsider the Waywood Road Site. And as you know, when you discuss real estate, it's perfectly appropriate for you to go into executive session. I appreciate the whole task force, the additional help, because anyone I talk to, I always, would you be interested in coming on to the word?
Fantastic.
Right?
Now we're talking.
However, why are we sitting here listening to you? You're going to appoint a task force. Great. Why don't you appoint your board member?
Yeah, we got to that, yeah.
Well, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, though, is if you had such an issue, that, you know, there's a lot of mistrust, you think, you know, there's issues with the finances, why wouldn't you have representation? I mean, wouldn't that be your first move? I mean, what do you want to have somebody there right away? Why are we waiting? I mean, I said, why don't they appoint a board? Why don't they appoint their board members? Because we want it, because it will help bridge the gap, right? So, we're not having these discussions in front of the public where we're trying to build a relationship. So, you know, you come to our meetings, we'll come to your meetings, we both have representation. Why wouldn't you approach it that way? Maybe I just, I can't appreciate the history and how passionate people are about this issue, but it never is going to get fixed. Well, and I would support. In this manner. It just doesn't. You put people on, you put me on the defensive, and all I'm interested in is just moving forward. I really don't want to hear about what happened in the past. But I'm certainly not going to sit here and let you insult me, either. And I would support a task force as well. I will say, though, after the way that we've been treated this evening, I'm concerned about cordiality and respect, which you mentioned in your letter. The second meeting that we had together, I came to in open faith, and I felt threatened when I left. So, I'm very concerned, Dr. Lef, about cordiality and respect moving forward with this task force.
Is that something I did?
No, I'm just letting you know, because you were the first one that put the motion on the table for the task force, and I felt that your response was more respectful. So, I'm hoping I can.
I mean, I would heartily agree with you on that point. The library board meeting that I went to, I didn't see any of that happening.
Any of what?
Cordiality and respect with members in the audience. So, between that, between the mayor's requests, between the fact that Pocopson does not have any representatives on the board, I think it's time for municipalities to form a task force and to try to figure out how we're going to work this out together.
That's completely fine.
And that's my notion.
I hope it's done respectfully, and that good notes are taken, and that the library is invited to, to participate.
Let me, let me address the representation issue, because I know that this has come up again at different townships. Our library, and this was before my time, before I was on the board, had come up with this notion of a fair share contribution for the townships based upon the assessed value of the properties, I guess, the number of cardholders or how much they use the library circulation.
Can I just clarify? The library didn't come up with that.
Okay, that was.
It was, it was put together by a task force, I believe. All municipalities were asked to send a representative. So, it was the library board and representation from all the municipalities who wanted to participate. So, that's how that came to be.
Right. And so, part of that was this decision to allow dedicated representatives, either for meeting the fair, fair share or for having a dedicated tax, correct, Donna?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so it's.
It's not correct.
It's 15% gets you one seat. Adopting fair share gets you a second. Okay, so it's 15%. Well, I said, Colas is what Colas is saying. I thought it was a dedicated.
Let me read it to you. Let me read it to you. Municipal designees, any municipality that contributes 15% of the library's local parentheses municipal and county funding shall be allowed to freely designate one trustee. Municipalities that have a dedicated library tax.
That's the dedicated policy.
Or provide full funding according to a formula established by the state shall be entitled to designate one trustee. And if they meet both of those criteria, they may designate a total of two trustees.
So, that, you're reading.
I'm reading from your bylaws.
From the bylaws?
That's, I agree.
Yeah. No, no, no. Someone said that's not correct. Someone said it's this and this. This is what, this is what it is.
So, it's clearly more complicated than I just, just made it out to be. But the point that I wanted to make is we are interested in looking at that again, because that does put us in a situation where we can have a township like Pocopson, who basically has decided to give us nothing, right, who doesn't have a representative on the board. Now, we would like to have a voice from Pocopson, and we are actively seeking, in fact, we have the name of a couple of people that we're going to approach to see if we can have them be an at-large member. But obviously, they reside in Pocopson, and we would hope that they would agree to be the liaison with the Pocopson supervisors in an unofficial capacity, because they don't give us any money at all, right?
Can I interrupt? And if you would read a couple paragraphs above what you just read.
Yeah.
It is the goal of the board to have representation from all the municipalities. I don't know if you have that in what you printed out.
It is, it is the objective of the library to have at least one trustee, either a municipal designee or a member-at-large from each municipality in the library service area.
Yeah, right. So, I think that's a key, key part of our bylaws.
Right. So, we know that this has been an issue, because currently, Pocopson doesn't give us any money, so they don't have a representative designated. But we still want to get someone from Pocopson, and we're actively searching to find someone. We've also know that we need two representatives from, I think, West Marlborough.
East Marlborough.
East Marlborough. So, we.
We need one from West Marlborough.
We need one from West Marlborough. The thing is, it's very hard to get dedicated volunteers. And we do know that, of course, we've had some board churn recently. So, we're very aware that obviously, people look at that library and say, what's going on? You seem to be losing board members, right? So, it's hard to get the dedicated volunteers. And we are a working board, right? We have lots of committee structures that we use, and so, it does require us to be a working board. But, but, wherever I was going with the designated. So, we realize we want to have more input from the townships. We want better communication with the townships. Since I've taken over as president, sending those regular emails, making sure that we can have even an at-large member, even in Pocopson, who would go to those township meetings to keep those lines of communication open. We know we need to do a better job with communication. We have certainly acknowledged that ourselves. But, but what you wanted to say about the board violates its duty to those who have contributed money. The board annually runs an operating deficit. Absolutely, we know this. And when I took over as president, this board has been dedicating to closing that operating deficit, right? We support an adult literacy program, which is a very expensive program. It's heavily supported by the United Way. But a few years ago, the federal government changed the protocol for grants that it would support, and it only supported literacy programs that led to the GED. And our program.
No, that led to work programs.
Work programs, okay. And so, our program doesn't necessarily lead to work programs for the adults who take our literacy classes. We lost some federal funding. We've been trying to make that gap up. It's about a $40,000 gap approximately a year, and we have yet to fully find a way to make that gap up. So, we have been faced with, do we cut our adult literacy program down, or do we continue to fund it from the interest on our investment portfolio? Our understanding, and this is in our documents, and Joan, you can check this, but our understanding is that the principal from the money that was contributed to the first capital campaign cannot be touched, except for capital improvements? No?
No. Nothing, nothing that was raised for the first capital campaign has been touched. That is restricted. We have separate investments. Joan, jump in. We have separate investment portfolios, accounts.
Right.
Nothing for the first capital campaign is touched.
Right, but the interest, that's.
No interest. It builds.
And we have said that publicly several times.
It's not touched. The interest goes into that account. It's a restricted account. It's growing. I sent you the, I sent you the funds with the, with the definitions. I sent them to you. I mean, why? I think, I think we should address the rest of these in writing later. I don't want to. Why? I mean, it's like, you know, you send information, it doesn't even get looked at. And then you get crucified for it. That is unbelievable to me.
So, I mean, I do agree. I think, you know, obviously, Scott, if we had known that you were going to make a public statement with all of these charges, we would have been happy to have had a written statement to respond to all of these charges. Or we could have had this conversation offline, and we could have answered these questions for you offline.
I mean, I thought you were going to finally appoint your representation, and, you know, we would be. Let's move forward. That's amazing. Wow.
And also, I do take exception with the name of the task force, calling it to save the library. When, when the mayor suggested to Borough Council, and I'm very hopeful, by the way, that on Monday, Borough Council will not withdraw funding. I think we've done some outreach to them. I think they've seen the community response to their local I think they've seen the community response to their local library. I'm very hopeful that they will decide to not act on Mayor Fedex's recommendation, although obviously, we'll be there on Monday night to see what happens. But the point is, is we've had overwhelming support from the community, who have basically spontaneously started a Save Our Library campaign. In fact, the poster that's hanging on our front door was put together by a private individual who has a graphics art company, who's trying to mount this kind of group in support of saving the funding for the library in the borough. So, please do not use the name Save Our Library for your task force, because this is a grassroots group that's supporting the library already, and we'll be at the meeting on Monday night, I think, very vocally, trying to persuade the borough not to withhold the library's funding.
Colas, I think you had your hand up.
Oh, a long time ago.
The library had a chance to talk.
No, no, and that's fine, and at one level, it's a very healthy dialogue, at another level, it's a very unhealthy dialogue.
Agreed.
You know, as Yogi Berra once said, it's deja vu all over again. And to hear the library board members say repeatedly, well, that was the old regime, we're the new regime, with all due respect-
I don't know what the old regime is anymore. I'm just saying that-
I apologize, I'm speaking right now. I think it is very disingenuous to say, well, that was then, this is now, and we're doing things differently, because I'm sitting in a room, we've had this discussion a number of times. I think for you to call the chairman of the supervisors ignorant repeatedly is a pretty gutsy statement. I don't care how you-
Him questioning my integrity is a lot worse.
Once again, I think that's a pretty gutsy move. I would also point out that in calling for these appointments to be made, we're sitting here with Jim Nelson in the room, who was the township's last representative on the library, who resigned and discussed. And so, to say, well, you don't have a representative, when in fact, we have a gentleman here who has national credentials as an architect, he's built 12 or so libraries nationally, you know, the highest skill set you could possibly ever desire in a library, and to say, well, where are your representatives?
How many meetings did he attend?
One, as far as I know, but that's none of my business. No, he attended one.
Let's not, let's not go there.
Don't get into that. My point is this, bottom line, end of the day, all, everybody in this room supports a new library. The end of the day, that's what everybody wants. Yes, there is concern, great concern, about the current and the past, and it's the board. You can't divorce yourself from the past. There's huge concern. And so, at that level, I support this task force, that it's time to do something different. I don't want to be sitting here 15 years from now, having the same arguments. Guys, let's get at this. The wheel is broken. So, I would support Dr. Lef's motion for a task force, and I do look forward to the appointments. And by the way, I'm a resident of the township.
Other comments?
Bill Shelton, resident and taxpayer from Kennet Township. I believe that you are the customer, and they are the supplier of services here. In the context of the meeting tonight, I don't mean people who use the library, who are the, who are the ultimate users of the library services, but in the relationship between these two organizations, they are the supplier of services, including accounting and every other aspect, and you're their customer. The customer is clearly dissatisfied with what the service provider has provided, stated tonight. I don't know about other times, I don't know about anything else. As a taxpayer, I applaud you looking at this and seeing what there is underneath, as a fiduciary responsibility of turning over taxpayer funds to ask the questions you've asked. I thank you for that. There's quite a bit of attitude that was expressed here tonight. Personally, I, Scudder, I've known you for a few years, and I would never question your, call your name as you've been called tonight. I would not do that to you. I don't know you very well yet, Dr. Lef, but I would not call you a name, Bob, I would not call you a name like that. Lisa, I clearly would never call your name like that.
You can call him, you can call him.
Yeah. I'd rather not call him.
I mean, there should always be an attitude of respect in these meetings, and there's a lot of concerns that you've raised, but I think you've used the language that, in a crafted statement, that conveys your concerns. There's, there's no other way to say what you've said, I think, other than the way you said. You're very careful with your words. The supplier has a lot to think about in responding to the customer's needs, and then ultimately, to us the taxpayers. So, I thank you for your effort and your courage in what you did.
Let me just clarify, I have no issue with, you know, Scudder wanting to see every piece of paper, every dime, I mean, what do you think I was doing before I sent you everything? I was going through and making sure we had all the data and everything tied out. However, my issue is not that, you know, the library should have, shouldn't have oversight. Of course, I work in, in the corporate world, you have to have oversight. I would want oversight, it actually protects me as a volunteer and as a treasurer, to have that oversight. I have no issue, which is why we sent everything. My issue wasn't with that. I appreciate it. I, I mean, I met with you, I've met with you, I've met with, and every one of you I asked, you know, would you consider helping, would you consider volunteering, would you consider helping, come on the board, even before I knew who you were? Because you obviously knew, you had history, you cared about the library. So, for, for, for you to imply that, you know, we're working in secret is ludicrous. Now, I'm only speaking for me, but I think my name was put out there tonight, specifically not being transparent, and so, I am offended. I didn't call you a name, I don't think. I just thought it was very ignorant for you to do that, when I gave you everything you asked for. It's personal.
I take your point. I take your point.
I appreciate that. I do.
The whole goal of this whole thing is the end of my statement, which is, we need to sit down and work through this, and the best way that we seem to have figured it out is to get a neutral group in the middle, that will be able to pull together all the pieces that apparently are getting lost, because we sit at the same meeting, and we come away from it with different ideas. Somewhere, there's a communications gap. So, we get, we get task force together and make it come together, and then we can keep on going. And no matter how testy I may have been in my statement, I have said very clearly, we're not withholding the money. We're continuing to support the library, because we look forward to the library doing well. And I said in my statement that I have no doubt that the members of the board have the highest regard for the mission and of the library and to make it work out. You see it in there, when you read it over. So, we really are all going in the same place, but now, you know, you're hitting me with two-by-four, because I hit you with a two-by-four.
Well, Scudder, I just wish, I just wish, I mean, if you had had in your agenda a motion to form a task force, then we would have seen that there was going to be a motion, and we probably would have come prepared, or maybe you would have sent us something in advance. I mean, you talk about transparency. If you read the agendas for the library, and we provide much more detail, since I've taken over in January, on what we'll be discussing. It doesn't just say new business, it specifically says items that we would discuss. So, if we had known there was going to be a motion, or if you had sent us this document, we could have prepared maybe some answers to some of your questions, and it could have been a much more harmonious discussion. As, as Joan is saying, we come in here expecting to find out who your representatives are, so that we can meet with them. Graciously, we came to improve the communication, and instead, we feel like we've just been attacked by this state, this statement, to which we're being asked to respond point by point on our feet at a meeting in an unprepared fashion.
No, no. You haven't.
How could we not let that?
I understand that.
It's like having a trial, and you don't get to actually speak to the charges against you.
I think it's great.
Okay, so-
Great.
Other than Colas and the library board, is there anything else I need to say before we move on? Because we do have some more business, and hopefully, it'll get done fairly promptly. There's a motion on the floor, which is to authorize Lisa to join with the borough if the borough chooses to do a task force.
The borough and any other certain new statuities.
Yeah.
Yep.
Very much.
And we won't name it.
All in favor?
Aye.
As well as I am. Thank you. Dr. Lef, you have a motion regarding our Rosa Quintana.
Yeah. Due to a desire to appoint new Kennet Township representation on the library board, I move that Rosa Quintana no longer be Kennet Township's representative on the library board, and hope that the library board does appoint her as an at-large member of the library board.
Is there a second? Did I agree with that? I'll second it. Okay, so, is there any discussion on the board? I don't keep her, I mean, we got some bad information we acted on, but we can, we don't have to act on that.
Well, we only get two representatives.
So, why can't she stay one?
I hope that she would stay a representative on the library board, but it'd be the library board's decision. Understanding is, their board can be up to 20 members, and they have nine at the moment. So, there's-
Are they going to consider doing that?
That would be up to them.
I know that.
I would hope so. But, I mean, we've gotten to this point with her as our most recent representative. We've had several others beforehand. My understanding is that we thought that she was not going to be a member of the library board, but then circumstances change-
But she is now, so why are we taking her off? That's where I'm standing.
So, we can get two people in there that will communicate better with us about these issues.
Is there any further discussion? Yes?
So, do you feel that Rosa, your representative, hasn't communicated with you effectively, and so, she hasn't performed her duties, and so, that's why you're asking her to step down?
I don't think that it's appropriate to do that discussion, frankly, because what we're trying to do is to, to have two new members as our representatives.
So, you don't feel that Rosa is your representative?
We would like to have Rosa continue as a member-at-large, because we, from everything we've heard, she's done a good job and wants to continue to serve that capacity.
So, so if she's done a good job, and you'd like to see her continue to serve, has she not fulfilled her duties to you as your library representative? Why would, in other words, because obviously, you're voting to replace her.
That's correct.
And so, I just ask the question, why would you vote to replace her? Rosa, you know, I, as I said in an email to Lisa, I mean, I gave your township, and I've said this to other people, such kudos. Rosa is the first Hispanic woman ever to sit on the library board in its history, and it's great kudos to your township that you had the foresight to appoint her as your representative. She is well-respected in the community at large, and she's particularly an opinion leader in the Hispanic community, and as you know, the Hispanic community is increasingly the customer base that we serve. Certainly, in the adult literacy program, it's like 99% of, 99.9% of the people that we serve. So, she's an important voice for the Hispanic community, and she's your representative. And if, and if you ask her to leave, to me, it raises a concern about if you somehow perceived her not doing her duty to you.
We got, we got here to this position somehow, and I think that, you know, she does a good job for you in the library. We're looking for the Kennet Township representatives on the library board to make a change in terms of how we're interacting.
So, you want, you want more influence on the board? Is that what you're saying, and Rosa?
Can I call on Whitney, please?
Yes, sure, sure.
All I was going to say was that if the library board finds her a very useful member to help represent the diversity, there is absolutely nothing tying their hands, not to refer to an at-large member, and you still get her input. And particularly, if you need more representatives, do it, do it right now. Just get it done with, and stop holding out the township members and the rest of us, because it's a, it's-
That's my 9:30 deadline.
You know, I mean, she's such a valid member, just take her as an at-large member, and the question is done.
We absolutely will do that, Whitney, but I want to make the point that I'm just surprised that you would basically turn her down as your representative. I find that very disheartening. So, I just want to go on record.
So, any other discussion? Yes, Ted?
I would say that in the interests of de-temps-
Ted Moxon.
Ted Moxon, County President. In the interest of detente between you and the board, and in light of the discussion that has happened over the last half hour, it would make a lot of sense for an olive branch to be thrown by you to the board and not do this with your current board member.
If we're only limited to two members, I mean, I'd be happy to have three.
Well, you can ask the board to appoint someone else as an at-large.
And if you would like to make a recommendation for an at-large member, we would love to have that recommendation, absolutely.
Rosa Quintana.
Well, but she's already, so she's currently, she's currently on your board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have a motion for two representatives to the library board?
Like to appoint Bill McLaughlin and Jeff Ketter to the library board as Kennet Township's representatives to the library board.
What are their names?
Bill McLaughlin and Jeff Ketter.
They're both sitting in the back, for those who don't know them. Are you second? I'm second. Okay. Any discussion of the board law? Yes, both the gentlemen are ordered on two committees. There go, this is violation of your policy on committee membership.
Well, they're not, it's not a Kennet Township committee, it's an external board. So, it doesn't violate the policy.
That's a little bit of a violation.
Okay.
I'm just making a mistake.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I mean, if it was a Kennet Township committee, our general policy has been for Kennet Township committees to not have someone serve on more than two.
I have nothing wrong with the county themselves, it's just-
Thanks, Bob.
Policy. Yeah, yeah, and I had thought about it, but it's an external board.
Any discussion from the audience? All right, hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Congratulations, gentlemen. That covers, as far as I know, is there anything else under library board appointments in either dress?
Not tonight.
Okay, well, that gets us now down to public comment at 25 after 10. Yes? That's why I came. The race was very interesting.
Hard to do like that.
It has to do with, this letter that came to my house from the Kennet Township, having to do with the requirement to pump private septic tanks every three years. Can somebody tell me how many of those systems there are in the township?
About a thousand.
About a thousand?
Actually, no, about 2,000.
2,000, that doesn't surprise me at all. Who is going to monitor those 2,000 to see that they have provided you with evidence that every three years they have pumped their tank?
We have a part-time employee that should-
Is that his sole, is her sole job?
No.
It seems like it's a lot of work, you know, right?
Well, unfortunately, it's a requirement from the state. We have no choice to do it, what to do it. The state requires us to adopt this ordinance. We were actually delayed in adopting it, and they finally said, you know, we're not going to issue any more planning measures for development unless you adopt it. Everybody in the county has to do, in the state has to do this. But in Chester County, they originally started a program at the health department level that would assist us in obtaining that information, but unfortunately, the funding for that went away. So, we're retired to do it at a township level. So, what we're doing is, we're, we send out the postcards, we have the list of residents that are required to provide it, we have to send them reminders. We have to send them reminders. It's a lot of work, but it's something we must do.
Is there a penalty for non-compliance?
We did not, no. We did not send it a penalty. We're just going to try to make sure everybody complies. And some of the haulers are providing us with data as well.
It's kind of hard on the resident who doesn't need that.
Right, I understand, but unfortunately, the state feels you should pump every three years.
I understand.
So they mandate that? Yeah.
You finish, White?
Yes.
Ted?
Just following up, hopefully the last comment of the evening. Would it be possible to reach out to the top line haulers in the area and specifically try to engage their assistance in this, even if it's only in the form of providing an extra receipt and a return envelope for Kennet Township residents? So that when they pay, when the resident pays the bill, they get a receipt and an envelope, all they have to do is mail it off.
We can ask them. Take a picture.
I would just like to say that I find that the supervisors and the governance of Kennet Township to be very progressive, fair, enlightened, and very, very pro-library in terms of hopes, in terms of funding and the future. And I think olive branches have been extended to both groups and I am most excited and offer my support in any way I can. Very thoughtful, enlightened, and individual to make a new era in view of the past, in view of the present, and working towards the future. I'm very happy about the task force. I'm happy that the library board is welcoming and happy and receptive to this group and I'm very happy about the way that it has been formed and proposed. And I, as a citizen and member of Kennet Township and a library goer, I am there almost every day, am excited and very happy about resolution tonight, however we reached it.
Would you please state your name?
Lynn Woffler.
Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry, a quick clarification, Scudder. Although, I mean, I agree with Karen's statement. Obviously, we always want to have dialogue about how we can move forward together, you know, to make the library better. But you realize that how our library board works, just like you work, is we have to take votes on anything, right? So we'll take this back to our board. So our comments tonight about being obviously receptive and, you know, wanting to work for the task force, we can't make that decision. We'll take this back to our board, we'll have a discussion, and then obviously we'll let you know our response. Again, I guess based upon whether the borough passes a motion to have a committee on Monday.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Thank you all for your patience. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Amen.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.